It looks like that, it'll say real. But I'll start it.
It's now six P M., July seventh, twenty twenty. I'd like to welcome everyone this evening to the regular scheduled board meeting. Swan County Board of County Commissioners. At this time, I've asked Commissioner Richardson to do our invitation and our pledge. If anyone would please stand.
May we pray. Father, we thank you for this time together. We thank you, Lord, for bringing us together so Kennedy talked about the issues for us. Pray God that you give us wisdom and insight to make decisions that are best for our community. Lord, and pray that we bring honor and glory to you in what we say. And then we pray for our first responders. We pray for those men and women in our military. And, Lord, all of those healthcare workers that are putting themselves in harm's way for the sake of others. We pray God that you keep them, protect them, and their families today. Lord, just watch over here for us all. We pray in Jesus' name.
Felt relations.
To the land, open our eyes to America, and to the Republic of which we stand, a one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, I'd like to welcome everyone. At this time, we'll proceed with our first round of business approval minutes from our June thirteenth, sixteenth, twenty-third, and thirtieth meetings. Do I have any questions or comments, or do I have a motion to approve?
A motion to approve.
Say it.
I got a motion to approve by Commissioner Hale, a second by Commissioner Gamble. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving right along to the consent agenda. I have to have items two through eighteen. Do I have any questions, comments, or do I have a motion to approve?
I'd like to pull ten and sixteen, please.
Say again.
Ten and sixteen.
Ten and sixteen. With removal of item ten and sixteen, do I have a motion to approve all of that?
Mr. Chairman, if I might, to number five.
With removal of item five, item ten, and item sixteen, do I have a motion to approve?
Say it.
Have a motion to approve by Commissioner Gamble, a second by Commissioner Fleming. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Discussion on item number five.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We had anticipated moving over to the policy because of the question permit hearing. With all of the Democrats closing down and having to do different notification, we're not going to have a proper notice for that meeting. So we're going to have to push it to the first meeting in August.
Say it.
So if that wanted, if you wanted to keep the location instead of making a specific change.
But at this time, we don't have to do anything. Can we just do that at the next meeting?
Yeah.
Just drop it.
As long as we know that we're doing a table. Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for that. Commissioner Gamble, item ten.
Item ten's on the purchase of the generator. I just had a question. Is that a natural gas generator? That's the one going next door?
The plan is to use natural gas without.
Yes. That's the only question I have.
Allow a motion to approve. I have a motion to approve item number ten by Commissioner Gamble. Do I have a second?
Say it.
Second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I will ask before we go to item sixteen that everyone, as far as the board and the county is concerned, please speak up as much as we can. Like people in the back, I'm sure you can't hear, but it's tough. We'll work through it. Item number sixteen, Commissioner Gamble.
Item number sixteen is the Florida Department of Transportation funding for the widening of US 129 north of I-ten. My only question on that is, that's just a widening. That's not, we're not trying to put in that service road or anything that's going in for that company that we had recently discussed.
No, this was actually the result of a lot of meetings that we had to discuss the widening of that area north of I-ten to accommodate. That's actually in our employment center designation that we made. So we're trying to direct employment there, commercial activity, when we know that we don't have the roadway to support it. So we had the meetings after that land use hearing that we had discussed that when the service road conversation came up. This has nothing to do with the service road. This actually has to do with widening 129 itself north.
Well, at the time, we were discussing the widening of it and an extra lane that started into that. We're just really talking about seeking support and funding for the widening of it.
That's correct. In those meetings that we had with DOT, after our land use public hearing, there were other options that DOT helped put together in those meetings. And this actually, this request actually is consistent with one of the options that came up.
That's all I have. Chairman, is there a motion to approve? I have a motion to approve item sixteen by Commissioner Gamble. Do I have a second?
Say it.
Second by Commissioner Fleming. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Commissioner Gamble. At this time, we have a presentation regarding state of the resource payment in lieu of taxes. Mr. Hugh Thomas, Swan River Water Management. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate the good to see all of y'all. It's a little bit challenging times that we are in, but appreciate y'all being here and letting me stand before you tonight. I believe you have a presentation, PowerPoint presentation, that was given to you earlier. And I'll be brief in running through that. As far as the district goes itself, we have worked with numerous communities, City of Live Oak, as well as Swan County, and have a number of different projects with them, working to help fulfill our mission. For your information, I know the district themselves, we are made up of, all are part of fifteen counties. Fortunately, Swan County, we service the entire county here. So we appreciate the opportunity to work with that. Our areas of responsibility are maintained within water supply and water quality, as well as flood protection and protection of natural systems and natural systems restoration. Number of our programs involve our springs grants with the legislature approved funding. And it is, this year, it's similar. Even with the threat of COVID, we're appreciative of the governor in approving our tentative budget as it stands right now. To this point, anyway, just funding for our program. And so, along with it, and our alternative water supply grants. In fact, we just received notice today from the Department of Environmental Protection in trying to develop some additional water supply, alternative water supply grants themselves. Our river grants is a district funded program. We have a number of river grants that have been utilized by the county and the city here in Live Oak with it and our other communities as well. And then certainly our ag cost share program going forward with a number of producers in the county themselves. I think we've got, locally, we have some sixty-seven projects right now on our ag side with producers on there. We've got some ongoing projects, I-75 and County Road 136, wastewater improvement project, along with our DOT cap program, working with the county as well. And then, as I've mentioned already, our ag cost share programs. Certainly, the benefits rank high with all of these projects. It's why these projects are funded. For our ag cost share program, estimated about three point one five million gallons per day of water that is conserved by producers implementing best management practices, conservation practices, along with over half a million pounds of fertilizer that is not applied because it's estimated and determined due to technology as to how much fertilizer is actually needed. So producers can be much more efficient thereby with the potential of improving water quality within our rivers and spring system. So we work to fund those programs as well. Moving forward with some of the program areas, our minimum flows and minimum water levels. The district continues to work with our communities, both on MFLs, as we call them, and our water supply planning. We're currently working on the lower Santa Fe and Chutney minimum flow level. We had our first public meeting for that. Our second public meeting is scheduled for the twenty-sixth of this month, and that's a peer review. There, my scientists are reviewing the process by which we're using to develop those MFLs. And then we'll be releasing that later this year. Also, with our water supply planning efforts that go into place, that is our planning effort to look out twenty years into the future, determine what the water needs are going to be from a groundwater perspective, and then try to plan for that water supply to be available at that time. Last year, if you'll recall, it came to the commission, the governing board had adopted our water supply plan at that time. And we're revising that plan now, working on it, looking at our water supply planning areas. I mentioned to you that we had an eastern planning region and also a western planning region. And so we're looking at that. Those are areas where the preliminary data is indicating that we may have challenges out twenty years into the future for providing groundwater abundance supply. So we look at planning projects. Also, on slide seven, you'll see there, there is a timeline. I will admit, that timeline has shifted some. The pandemic has impacted that from a planning perspective. But we are moving forward and trying to maintain that effort. And then, looking at our water quality initiatives, new technology that's out there to address water quality concerns, that I'm sure if you're aware, that continues to be a major effort that the governor wants us to work on through more management districts and Department of Environmental Protection. So looking at septic sewer conversions, as well as new projects in and enhancing our water quality monitoring network. So with that, I'll be glad to entertain any questions that anyone may have at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Do you have any questions or comments from the board? Commissioner Fleming.
Mr. Thomas.
Yes, sir.
I need water project initiative. Can you tell me, subject to sewer, what about in the rural communities?
Well, and actually, one of the things that there is out there, there's some newer technology to where it's, from a physical perspective, to look at it, it looks very similar to the traditional septic systems. But the treatment for nitrates is actually enhanced within it. As you're probably aware, traditional systems really don't do anything to treat nitrates and nutrients that are available in the waste stream. It's more for bacteria confinement. But the newer technology actually does that. And there's a number of different systems that are out there. Some of them address the tank system itself, and you can use it, you know, at a single residence location. Some of them address the drain field. And there's been some advances in looking at traditional septic systems with just an enhanced drain field. A lot of it is dependent upon the soil types that are specific to that particular home.
Thank you, Commissioner Fleming.
Yeah, while we're on sewage, I do want to mention, Mr. Thomas and his staff, I mean, Mr. Ben Glass is here. You know, he's talking about all the great things they do. But I just want to thank you guys for assisting us on the, with the future Swan River Task Force, boy. Your employees do a great job in giving us the daily reading and always being available with the demo.
I appreciate hearing that. And it's an ongoing effort.
It is.
Just so everybody understands, that has to do with Valdosta.
That's the Valdosta sewage field, that's correct.
Yep.
So when I said sewage field.
Yes, sir.
But they've been a big partner in that. It's really helped and gathered information we wouldn't have ever learned of yet. So I appreciate that. Appreciate your efforts.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. We appreciate your time.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I do have a check.
We, we.
We appreciate that, too. The check is in the amount of sixteen thousand eight hundred and thirty-two dollars and eighty-one cents. This is for payment in lieu of taxes. The remaining balance of the twenty-eight thousand three hundred and forty-seven dollars and sixty-one cent was issued in a check to the school board, which we've been doing on a real basis. That check was eleven thousand five hundred and fourteen dollars and eighty cents. That'll be glad to give that to you, Christian.
You better give it to me. I watch over it. These gentlemen here.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate you very much.
Thank you.
What you got, man?
Big chat.
If you want a picture.
Oh, you'll find it's not. We're okay with that one.
That's a deal.
Whatever you want to.
I'm not a slender, you guys.
Break it down a little bit. There you go.
Thank you. Thank y'all very much. Appreciate it. At this time, we'll move forward to item number twenty. Discuss with possible board action approval of final plat for Fields of Falmouth subdivision. Mr. Ron Meeks, planning his own. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chairman, board members, first plat that you have before you tonight is final plat approval of Fields of Falmouth. This is a subdivision that the board had previously given preliminary plat approval on. Subdivision contains twenty point nine seven acres, with a total of four five point zero one acre lots. All lots will front an existing paved road, which is one hundred and fifty-third road. Property is located in an A-one zoning district in section thirty-six, township one south, range twelve east in the Falmouth community. Plat was reviewed being compliant with Land Development Regulations. It's also been reviewed by another surveyor for compliance with chapter one seventy-seven's large statutes. It's bound to be in compliance. So you have a milar plat here for your signature, if board chooses to approve the final plat.
Do I have any questions or comments for Mr. Meeks?
I don't have any. I'll have a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Gamble. Do I have a second? Second. Second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Moving right ahead while we have you here. Item twenty-one, discuss with possible board action approval of final plat for Deer Lake Preserve subdivision. Mr. Meeks.
Now, I've given you guys a very lengthy history lesson in this subdivision. I try to keep it brief. This is a subdivision that you typically don't see very often. It's called a planned rural residential development. It's an option in the Land Development Regulations when a developer either by their choice or exceeds twenty-five lots and the development has the option to cluster smaller lots on twenty percent of the development while leaving eighty percent of the development as open space or agricultural used lands. It can be road dropped, it could be used for civil culture, as long as it's ag related. This subdivision actually came before the board of county commissioners in two thousand and seven. They did the rezoning process through the board. It was all approved. Road construction plans were approved. Roads were built. Plat became before the board. Plat was approved by the board of county commissioners, signed by the chairman at that time. Our process was that once, once we got the signatures from the chairman, we gave the flats to the developers for them to record and pay their recording fees with the clerk's office. During that time, the agents that were representative of the owner of that subdivision closed, disbanded their partnership, and the plat disappeared. So we've had a plat that's been approved by the board, but it's not been recorded in the official records. So the property changed hands. And Mr. Alcorn was hired to recreate the plat based on what the board approved in two thousand and seven. So we actually have a milar copy for the board's approval. It meets the requirements of the Land Development Regulations. It's been reviewed in compliance with chapter one seventy-seven. And if the board chooses to sign this one, I don't think Logan's going to let it out of his sight.
I'm, I'm very familiar with this project, and I would happily sign that if the board chooses to move forward with approval. I know this is going to be the site Bill Holmes, with what we're going to need of. And I would love to see what's happening. So do I have any questions or comments for Mr. Meeks on this?
I don't have any, Mr. Chairman. I'll have a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Gamble.
Say it.
I have a second by Commissioner Richardson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Follow. Thank you, sir. Moving right along to item twenty-two.
The last, the last plat the board has for their consideration is a final and preliminary plat approval for Ross Estates. It's a minor subdivision containing only three lots. So the board actually does preliminary and final plat approval in one meeting. The size of the subdivision is fifteen point zero three acres, contains a total of three five acre tracks. The lots that are, that are part of the subdivision will front County Road two fifty. Mr. Pravat and myself had a conversation regarding this. If he wants to address it at this time regarding some shared driveways on the subdivision, I'll, I'll turn it over to him.
Thank you, Mr. Meeks. Mr. Chairman, my, there've been discussions among administration about several different things, about these strip, I won't call it a strip, you know, going along existing public roads. This particular road is an arterial road that's out of the county. And what the comprehensive plan under Article One, you know, talks about what you want for the safety and health of everybody, is to eliminate as many driveways as you can coming on to these arterial roads. It's a comprehensive goal. We've been discussing, you know, how to address this as we move along, and this one happened to be, happened to be coming up. We haven't adopted an official policy, you know, on it yet. But what we were proposing is for the safety and health, you know, of everyone, that there would be some plan to begin where you have the, to eliminate driveways, to have the appropriate spacing to match F T O T standards on these collector roads. What that would do is basically have it so the driveways would be approximately three hundred and thirty feet, you know, it would take three hundred and thirty feet apart. And for, when you apply it to this particular situation, it would make it so that you would have to have a shared driveway between lots two and three, and then driveway for the lot, for lot one, would have to be a hundred and sixty feet from the western edge of no, no further to the east than a hundred and sixty feet. Therefore, really, two and three would have that shared driveway and then addressing it there. The other problem that we were also trying to address at the time has to do with the infrastructure maintenance on this. All of these lots would be running on that collector road, which is going to be all maintained by, you know, the county. When you're dumping these things out there, and if the driveways are not maintained properly, you know, going in, it becomes another maintenance issue, you know, for the county. And that's why we're addressing a different policy. So I put that out there as what is, is being considered. It's not officially adopted as a policy, but because this is a minor subdivision, less than three lots, it only, you only get one shot at it beforehand because you do preliminary approval and final approval all at one time. I talked with Mr. Alcorn about this some time ago, and the actual plat that was submitted didn't include these, the shared driveway concept that we, you know, that we're now, you know, talking about. And really, that's all I have. A recommendation is to have that shared driveway concept be applicable to this particular plat.
At this time, I think Mr. Alcorn would like to speak.
I just have a question. That's not a problem to put the shared driveway down between lots two and three. Within, you're saying within the west hundred. That driveway for the lot one could be anywhere within that west one hundred and sixty feet as it touches two one, two fifty.
Correct.
Okay. What I would ask for would be approval, subject to Jimmy reviewing, once we change it so that I don't have to come back in front of the board. You know, once Jimmy approves that, then we can record the flat in the public records and be done with it. That's, that's what I would ask for.
Satisfied.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do I have any other questions or comments for Mr. Meeks?
Sure.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Say it.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Richardson, a second by Commissioner Fleming. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Meeks. At this time, we'll move on to item number twenty-three. Set date, time, and location of budget workshops. Mr. Randy Harris.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, since you're back, if we put proposed dates of August fourth and fifth, starting at nine A M. here at the U wish Atlantic, that's why we, we're considering to redo the board being to that Monday the third. Will this be the fourth and fifth, right here, the workshops?
For this day, we're ready to acknowledge that that's fine.
I'm good, boy.
Everybody.
With your help.
Satisfied. Thank you, sir.
Two days is probably not going to be long enough.
Sir.
I said, two days is probably not going to be long enough.
I hope one day we can have it, same with us. I was being optimistic.
At this time, move forward to item twenty-four. Do you have any questions, comments regarding COVID? At this time, moving ahead to item number twenty-six, I'm going to open board of public comments. Anyone who's wishing to speak, if you please make your way to the podium. See, and I'll close public comments. At this time, we'll have closing comments. We'll start with Mr. Harris. Do you have anything to share with us?
Well, I was going to say, I was excited to listen to the comments regarding what, what a management district is involved in. I was going to share, I didn't want to interrupt. But I know that as a county, county as a whole, we're doing our part to ensure rapid recharge of the aquifer. I was out looking at quite a few sinkholes today. And in some cases, we've got people praying for sinkholes to drain water away from their homes. But we've got them all over the place, and I'm just going to tell you, I'm going to be working on an emergency repair of a railroad spur. We have a sinkhole under part of that rail spur. It was shut down. Matco, they've got railcars north of it. Can't move them, can't get them out of there. I'll walk right up to it, and you can hear the water running under the track. So I'll be involved in an emergency repair there. Just letting you know that. We've got a lot of other sinkholes that I'll be working on later, but they're not as urgent as the need would exist on that rail spur. I just want to share that with you.
Thank you, sir. Anything else? Thank you. Mr. Pravat, pleasant comment?
Yes, sir, nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Richardson.
I just want to say, appreciate the, being out at the Fourth of July festival last, this past weekend in Brantford River Reunion. A little different timing, a little different format, a little cooler for those of us who are out there. It's a lot cooler. And I think, it's why out there was soaking wet most of the time, so. But we had a lot of, a very good turnout and a very good fireworks show. And I appreciate the kind of Brantford, putting it on. Kind of worried about it a little bit, but we threw that little off, so. Thank you, those of you.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Fleming, pleasant comments?
I did see some of that parade at Brantford on two B twenty news. And I probably see that in South County, South County, the chair, I don't have anything, but it's time. It's good to be here. I see certain faces out there. Been a while since we had that many people back in the room, but everything is going on pretty good.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Gamble, pleasant comments?
I just hope everyone had a great Fourth of July. We had a good time down in Brantford for the parade and the festivals. And I didn't make it back in time for Live Oak fireworks, but I heard nothing but great reviews. So thank you to the City of Live Oak, CRA for that. Want to tell here and down in Brantford, everything was spot on and class act. But thank y'all.
Thanks, sir. Pleasant comments, Commissioner Hale.
I don't have anything other than our thoughts and prayers. You and your family. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, sir. I appreciate that. It's been a long three or four days. I know them all passed away. I just appreciate everybody. I usually try to close with a positive quote today. My quote is, "One of the most important things you can do on this earth is to let people know that they are not alone enough." I'm blessed to feel that. And I appreciate everyone.
It's time to have a motion to adjourn.
Adjourned.
Motion by Commissioner James, second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.